So I'm gonna call the meeting of the ordinance subcommittee September thirteenth, six P M. We're all here and we don't have anybody for public speak time. Do we have any minutes that we need to approve? I don't think we've met in a while, so. So what we have on our agenda is, we only have three things now. So looking at the request for ordinance regarding recreational marijuana, which the planning board is working on right now. An ordinance restricting single-use plastic bags and a request to create a human rights ordinance or committee. So do you want to tell us, because I know that you had an idea.
I did.
And I have a backup.
Okay.
So if we could have something to discuss if we.
Sure, sure.
You know, but I actually wrote this before you told me that you had.
Okay.
Anything, any ideas.
So let me show you what I had been working on that I didn't get to finish on time. My apologies. Alright, so I just took some, I was making a report just to have all of our stuff put together. So here was the original, how it was brought on.
Okay.
And then I went through and made a terminology page.
I'm good.
For everyone to have. And then talked about the scientific evidence that we had presented. And this kind of lays out that when we look at these questions about bags, we can't just look at getting rid of the bags. Say, okay, we don't have trash, so it's not an issue. Or just consumption of the bag or the production of the bag. Looking at those three. And then the scientific evidence at the end of that really was that there's pros and cons to all three. And so there was no clean-cut way. And this was important because we had intentionally waited a few years after Northampton. And the cons of only having paper bags seemed to be building more for them. And now they're seeming to put more emphasis on, let's say, claiming that people are moving to other towns or shopping out of town and stuff like that. Whether or not that's true, I don't know. But just to say that there's both the pros and the cons for each of them is truthful. But the pros and the cons for the other ones, if you go to those three different ways that plastic bags are utilized, the making of the bags, the using of the bags, and the disposing of the bags. The disposing of the one is the never-ending problem.
Right.
That's never gonna go away. So if you were to pick one, that would be the one that would have the longest-term impact.
Right, and probably the highest impact.
Yeah. So our choices that we had already thought about was first, just do nothing, keep things in the current status. And there's a lot of pros to that and a lot of cons to that. The cons really thought more of from an environmental standpoint so far. We hadn't really talked about it from a community planning standpoint. We had talked about doing an education-only programs beginning. And this could include the whole getting the, you know, the bumper stickers to bring your bags into the stores and stuff like that. And also having the stores have a place where we can see how they're getting rid of their plastics if they go there. And then the other one that we had was charging a fee for any bag that came out of the store. And we really didn't touch that one before, we just left it alone. And that's where I had a change of heart and I wanted to talk about that. But, so a fee for all bags is that if they have to give a bag away, they're giving a convenience fee for giving a bag. Any bag. It could be a plastic bag, it could be a paper bag, or really a post-consumer recycled bag. That one, and we have it in our initial one. One of the cons about that is that people can see that as an extra tax. So one of the things that I was thinking about a lot with the new school is that although everyone is in agreement on that we need a new school, the cost that that's going to force homeowners to incur is just so disproportionate. So charging a fee for plastic bags within the city would be a way to include not only people who live here paying that, but for people using East Hampton in, you know, in the economic venue as well. So I would like to discuss that more completely to see whether or not there are a lot of pros and cons to that that I'm not aware of. I keep thinking about our flat tax base for businesses here. Because when I think about businesses saying, oh, if you do that, we're gonna leave town, we can't afford it. Well, that goes against the fact that they're already getting a very low, low tax rate compared to other places. So to make that threat, they would really have to consider whether or not putting this one extra function into their day would be worth them uprooting their entire business. Do you have any thoughts?
So, so logistically, so would we be talking about, so if you went to Biggie's and you bought four bags worth of food and you accepted four plastic bags, then you would pay a fee for each bag. So let's say it's a quarter. So it'll cost an extra dollar. And the Biggie's would collect that dollar. And are you saying that they would then turn that dollar over to the city?
The way that it's worked in other municipalities is that part of the money goes to the, to the stores themselves as just a kickback.
Like an administrative fee?
Yeah, part of it for the cost of bags themselves and part of it, particularly if they're upgrading to the different bags. And then part of it would be to help them with buying additional bags.
Okay.
Or any other education that would be on site. But there's also the possibility of them taking a portion of that money and putting it to the city as well. You know, it's funny, twenty-five cents per bag is a lot. Like, I know at like price-rate stores, they'll charge ten cents a bag and people are okay with that. But even that, I see a big change in consumer behavior. I think saying we're gonna charge twenty-five cents per bag is too high.
Okay.
At the price point. But I don't even know if you agree with a tax at all on it, so I just wanted, I don't know enough about it to have a huge opinion, it was just an idea.
Okay. I don't think, I mean, we definitely can't call it a tax. I mean, it would definitely be a fee, because we can't levy new taxes.
Yeah.
And, and so that's, that's the only area where I'm not exactly sure how it would work legally. You know, if we were, if we were asking for stores to collect a certain amount of money and then earmark that for something like the school, you know, does that technically qualify as like an additional tax? I don't know. And, I mean, I guess the only other thing, and I'm interested. I like, I think that that is an interesting idea. I just don't know what the fiscal impact of that would be. I mean, if it's, that's why I said twenty-five cents, because I'm trying, I'm trying to think, to figure this out. Like, if you, you know, like, how, how much money could you actually put towards the school? Like, would it be enough to make it worthwhile?
Right.
You know? So I guess that's, that's another thing that we would probably have to kind of consider. Is, is this, is the financial impact against the school-building project worth the potential.
Right.
Kickback from people being resistant to it? I don't know.
I honestly, I could see that going to ballot the next year, whether or not people are willing to pay that in groceries.
Then they'll probably say, well, our taxes are gonna go up and.
If possible. But by that time, I won't be here, so.
Where are you going? Oh, here, I get it. Leave us with a legacy, I see.
I love, I love creative thinking, I love new ideas. I think, you know, so I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah.
Not everybody is in favor of a new school. I know you said everybody wants a new. Wants a new school, I heard, I heard that. Whoa, wait a minute, that's not the case. I think you have a very divided, a much-divided community. And just, and I know I knock on doors all the time when I talk to people about this. Many of them, so I think you would find a lot of resistance to earmark the funds for something, as you had said, for any one particular purpose. And if it's a school, I'm gonna go to ballot, I'm gonna fight it if someone is opposed. And someone is in favor, okay, great, we'll have an election at some point. A ballot question that will resolve the issue. In the meantime, folks are gonna be asked to be paying for the school in advance. And if worthy of the goal, as many people who would love the idea, there's gonna be as many people that are gonna like the idea.
Yeah.
And I would, I would be hesitant to float that one to the community at this point. I think it might hurt the school more.
Okay, yeah.
From the perspective of those who want a new school.
I mean, it is too bad, because I feel like a lot of the resistance, I mean, at least when I was knocking doors, the resistance to the new school was the financial piece of it. You know?
And it's for those who already can for, or feel.
Well, not even, I mean.
Many people are on a fixed income. I keep hearing that. And you say, now I'm gonna be so down, you say, twenty-five cents a bag sale. Now we're gonna have a dollar a visit. My gosh, I can see people cramming the bags full of stuff. The bags are gonna break outside, outside of the grocery stores. And then we're gonna have some real chaos if we, if I think if we start putting a charge of any substance on bags. And the business community, I'm sure, is gonna say, my gosh, how many people are driving away because of this? And the alternate argument can be, some people might come and shop specifically.
Right.
I don't know how many people are gonna drive out of their way to come here to do business. Just to look at it from the economic perspective. I would, I think what we were talking about in moving toward education and toward a promotional kind of, be cognizant and aware of how we use plastic and how in our community, how we want people to bring their own clean bags, really is the way we're, this community, I think, is at this point. And there may be another step in the near future, but I think our first step really is.
And I guess.
An educative step that everyone can kind of go behind. And then those who aren't cognizant, maybe they become more aware of a practice that isn't draining that environment.
I mean, I do have an idea though.
Okay, yeah.
It kind of marries the two of these things together. Because I, I mean, I do, like, I think it's important, like, finding creative ways. I agree. Especially when it comes to funding the school, because that, at least what I've run up against is like the, you know. In fact, I had, I was with, my daughter was with me and this woman was basically yelling at me about how children get all the resources and how they don't deserve it. And I was just like, children are our future. And like, yeah, of course, of course we need to like put money to the senior center and help seniors, of course we do. But like, you know, we also need to make sure our kids are protected and taken care of. Aside, so here, you know, my thought is, and, and I don't know how this would happen. I don't, this doesn't kind of fall within our purview necessarily, but it would be, I think, a great project for the schoolkids to, you know, for each school to create a bag that gets created into a plastic bag that can be sold at local businesses to benefit the school. You know, so the reusable bags.
Into a reusable bag?
A reusable bag.
You said plastic, reusable plastic.
Reusable plastic bag, you know, like the kind that you can buy Trader Joe's for fifty cents or whatever, you know? And have it designed by the kids at Maple, have it designed by the kids at Center Pepin, have it designed by the kids at Whitebrook. And all those proceeds.
School fundraisers, that was a great school fundraiser.
Yeah, and, but it could be, it could be tied into.
I, that's interesting.
Yeah, it could be tied into, I mean, that money could definitely, that money could be tied into, you know, education around, like, we need a new school, and, you know, something like that. But then.
I think, I think tied to education for students would be a nice, safe way of proceeding as opposed to be a new school. I think if you have a product with bags, kids design it, the school designs it, the kids promote it, why couldn't they be raising funds in the, from the community for education in general?
Yeah.
I don't think we need to tie it to a, I just think you're gonna lose income from the bag sales and from the impact of education. I think if we're looking for additional funds for the school, I think that'll help.
See, once I'm.
That's my perspective, maybe, maybe I'm short-sighted on, I'm trying to imagine. You're suggesting, you were suggesting tying it to a new school.
Well, I mean, we, I mean.
Funds for a new school.
Or, or just awareness about.
Awareness about.
I think, I think more about awareness. I think more, you're like, you know.
And education would be fine.
For me, you know, when, when that lady was kind of laying into me, I wanted to say, you know what? My kids had to go to a school that was built in eighteen ninety. And they didn't have a gym, they didn't have a cafeteria, they didn't have a real playground they could play on. How dare you talk to me about how much you need when you're living in your four-hundred-thousand-dollar house and driving your brand-new cars?
Yeah.
You know?
And it's a false dichotomy to pit elderly against children.
No, we're all connected.
They're just the two most vulnerable groups. But really, when you look at the funds, like, you have to include police and all of the other municipality departments. Those are just two among all of them.
Right, so what I was saying, you know, it'd be great for them to, you know, help spread the word that it benefits the children. And it would benefit them to be able to, you know, kind of get to those people like that woman I was talking to, to get them to understand the benefit of this. I mean, granted, this is going outside of what our.
And it's a little outside of the purview.
Yeah, but, I mean, but I do think it does make, so here's where it comes into the purview. I think it would be really cool, and I think we kind of talked about this a little bit, to partner with the schools and have, you know, something tied to, if we do decide to pass an ordinance where, you know, we say, you have to provide a place to recycle the bags if you are going to give these out. You have to put up a sign that says, please bring your own bags. And, and then it would be great for us to be able to say, and we've talked to all the art teachers in the, in the community, and they are designing bags that you will be able to sell that will benefit the schools. And will, you know, and the bags might be like.
Maybe we could say a certain percentage of proceeds have to go towards that.
Or something. I don't know, I mean, that, that part can be figured out later, I guess.
I, see, once I'm no longer a city councillor, I will be able to actively seek grants that would pull some of that community stuff together. And that's what we're missing from the equation right now. I feel like our hands are so tied. Well, it's out of our ordinance purview.
I think we can move forward.
Well, and, and so, I mean, this, you know, what I came up with was, which I think would be this, if we could take what you put in there.
Yeah.
As kind of like a statement, you know, so basically what I said was, any establishment in the city of East Hampton that provides thin plastic bags to customers must provide for recycling, recycling receptacle for such bags. Establishments, now, granted, I defined establishments are places that are over thirty-five hundred square feet. Now, this is something that needs to be, this is, was my best guess of.
I believe we can maybe define that.
Of size. Because basically what I wanted to do is I wanted to catch like the Family Dollar.
Family Dollar, CBS.
CBS, Rite Aid, you know, those, those types of places, which I don't think are.
I think you might even go as low as twenty-five.
It might be as twenty-five, so. So this, this part needs to be kind of like looked at, because I was just guestimating.
Would we say anything about excluding nonprofits, anything like that? I'm just thinking about parts of the closet, weren't there anywhere so concerned about?
Well, I don't think that they would, they're not, they're definitely not.
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, they would be small, that's why this specifically excludes small places. So even like the T-shirt shop in town.
Yeah.
Like, they're small, they, so they can use a plastic bag and not provide the receptacle. But, and one of the things I wanted to talk about, so, anyway.
And I think, I think the presumption there, the presumption, the theory there is that they're not using as many.
Because they're small.
There isn't as many sales.
Yeah.
And that's the rationale.
Exactly.
For having a square footage.
Yeah.
So, and so basically it said, "Establishments in the city of East Hampton shall only provide thin plastic bags to its customers if they clearly display a message posted in plain view to all customers that, as they enter the establishment, that reusable bags are preferable to single-use bags. Nothing in this section shall be read to preclude any establishment from using other types of bags at the point of sale." One of the things I wanted to, I kind of thought about as I was doing this, well, you know, we say establishment is anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five hundred square feet, which we can kind of refine. But I thought it might make sense, even if a smaller place, to make the information sign required if they are using plastic bags. So they don't have to necessarily provide the receptacle, but they still have to post a sign saying, we prefer you to bring your own bag. It's just a thought, and, and I also.
I think that's a great thought.
Okay, so let's, all need to display. The other thing I wanted to, I don't think we have any restaurants in town that are over twenty-five hundred square feet as it stands right now.
But you might, but I think we still have to have the exclusion for restaurants.
For restaurants, yeah. So that's, that's definitely one of the things I wanted to, and so maybe that's like a.
That's not for the burgers of takeout, takeout or, or, takeout or, is what? How do you describe the doggy bags, what used to be called the doggy bags?
You know, well, I think if we just say restaurants are excluded, are exempt.
Yeah. From the plastic bag, from, from recycling, because no one's gonna bring that back. If it's, the concept here is it's gonna have to spill over. You want, you want somebody recycling something.
Right, that's the minstrel.
Minstrel.
Yeah.
But would they be exempt from, no, we're not gonna say reusable bags.
No.
In those locations.
Okay, so enforcement, this by, this bylaw shall be enforced by the Board of Health or any designee or agent thereof, including determining the appropriate inspection process. So what I was thinking, you know, I don't think, I think we're gonna have to think about this one a little bit? Because I don't know if Jackie Doot is gonna want to do that.
I don't wanna limit it to the Board of Health, I don't think, I think it could be.
Board of Health.
In Board of Health or.
Any designee of the city?
And the police could enforce it. It's not high on their priorities.
No. Like building inspector.
The mayor.
Mayor. Well, I mean, with the mayor could, no, but no, I do think the mayor should be able to direct somebody from the city to be able to do it, to be able to enforce it. So maybe any designee of the mayor.
Mayor, there's this.
Yeah.
And it could be the mayor himself.
So.
Hopefully you wouldn't need to.
No, hopefully, yeah.
Have everybody contribute to award this, this one.
So then I put in, this is one that I found in a bunch of them. This is kind of like a, so all requirements set forth in this bylaw shall take effect within six months of approval of the bylaw by the Office State Attorney General and the satisfaction of the posting requirement. However, if retail establishment cannot comply with effective date of this bylaw due to economic hardship, which I don't think there would be any, this is just one I found in every single ordinance that I looked at. The establishment may petition the Board of Health for an extension of six additional months in which to comply. This bylaw may be enforced through any lawful means in law or in equity, including but limited to non-criminal disposition, the appropriate chapter of the city's general bylaws. If non-criminal disposition is elected, then any establishment that violates this bylaw shall be subject to the following penalties: written warning, fifty-dollar fine, hundred-dollar fine, two-hundred-dollar fine. Which I don't think anybody would ever get to that, ever. So, and then severability is basically like, if we, if the state passes something, then, you know, that is.
Thank you for doing that.
No, no problem.
I was just so stuck on how to write that, so I really couldn't.
Yeah, well, I figured it'd be good for us to have something to discuss. Now, by no means it's finished, and like, you know, some things need some rewording here. But I think it's, it's at least a start.
Yeah.
I think it's worthy of sending it along to the mayor's office.
Okay. All right, so what I'll do is I will make revisions to this. I'll email them to both of you.
Do we wanna send them to Jackie? Hopefully she's not watching. Our Board of Health agents.
Feeling I know what she's gonna say.
We gain another, another responsibility without additional.
I mean, but this one, this one's easy, because it's, I mean, it's, we're literally gonna be talking about like four places in the city, you know? And once, and here's my thought, so once we, once I have this revised and we take a look at it, invite Jackie in, invite the mayor in, and then reach out to those places that would be affected and say. I mean, Biggie's, as it stands right now, is in compliance, they're already in compliance. So basically what the other places would have to do is have a receptacle where their plastic bags can be recycled.
Almost in compliance, they need a sign.
And they need a sign. And they need a sign. Yeah, so.
And other places, less than my guidelines, but it was.
That's, that's, that's an email that I'm gonna, I wonder if I can find that online, like, the size of those, like, how much square footage they have? Is that something that?
The assessor's office keeps records of.
Of the total square footage?
Of the square footage of certain spaces.
Right, okay. And I think, I wonder if Manchester's would be, fall into that category?
Manchester's would definitely.
Yeah, so Manchester's would, so I'd wanna make sure.
If you gave me a list, I could, I mean, just tell you.
Okay.
After a little bit of real estate experience. What twenty-five hundred square foot looks like.
Yeah.
Not that it's rocket science, I mean, it is like ten, a hundred by twenty, a hundred by twenty-five.
Right.
That you're there.
Yeah.
And you can start to figure it out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Take a few other configurations to.
Sure. Is, is it, what's the one that's up there on Union Street that's across from?
Righty?
Is that Righty?
Right.
Okay, I feel like it used to be Brooks or something.
It was.
Okay.
It was.
I guess that was a while ago. Every time I think it, I think Brooks.
That shows you what kind of a settled East Hampton idea.
Yeah, right, I know.
A newcomer to our community.
Okay, so I, I can do that, and I think that's, that's gonna put us in a good place. And I can do this pretty quick. I'm thinking I could probably get this out to you guys, you know, next week.
Sure.
So I think that could be good. And now I did leave, are we, any other thoughts on this? Are we, are we good, we'll try this and?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. I did leave the Human Rights Commission, I just wanted to throw that out. Because I feel like, you know, after the, you know, reading the Attorney General's report and with all the stuff that was happening, you know, like, it seems like there's people in town that are trying to be antagonists, like, there's Confederate flags flying on trucks and like, it's, there's a. So I'm just wondering if like, we wanna just wholesale, like, put this out of our thing, or if we wanna.
You know, we could always bring it back if we wanted to. I see the rationale for leaving it on the table. I wonder if, if we're leaving it on the table, just to leave it on the table, I would rather remove it without prejudice.
Well, I wanted to think, you know, because I know Greenfield has one, and I know Northampton has one. And, you know, one of the things that I haven't really been able to get a clear idea of is what exactly they do.
What exactly they do, how it all.
So, what's your thought?
I, I'm still in favor of city council being trained in diversity as a first step in that.
Well, we could call Barbara Love.
Can we make a motion at the next city council meeting to request, we can either request the.
At the next council.
Funds from the city council itself, or request special funds, funds from the mayor.
We have to put budget for that.
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to.
But maybe that's something we could ask for. So would it be an emergency appropriation?
Or would it be, probably wouldn't be for this cohort.
But it would be a.
Because I think, you know, it's like, do we?
A use of, a use of funds that we could, that we could transfer.
And I think, I mean, it probably makes sense, since we have a pretty large group that's gonna be transitioning out. It would probably make sense to do it in January, when the new group comes through.
We could ask if we could be grandfathered into one of the diversity trainings at the high school. And we could also get price points from, from that, right?
I wonder if, huh, so I know, so we just, I, all of the Northampton Public School employees just went through like a pretty intensive diversity training, and it was really good. That's how people have the global majority, right?
That's where it came from.
That's where it came from, so, but, and Barbara Love is Professor UMass, and she heard, she brought in a group of people and they ran the training. And they're doing another one soon, and that, you know, so there's a, there's a signup right now. It'd be great if we could jump into those, I mean, even though we would be with people that we don't necessarily know.
I guess I was thinking, if we already have a contract as a city.
Yeah, I don't know if we do.
With, I would think so.
With the Collaborative for Educational Services? Because Sapphire was part of this training.
Okay. Is it, is it something we wanna bring to the mayor at the next city council meeting?
Yeah, or just.
Clarification, or do you wanna do it?
Well, we probably should go into it knowing, you know, like, what the, what the story is before we just bring, like, throw it out in, at the, in the meeting. But I think maybe having a plan, like, like I said, I, I don't necessarily, here's. But I, I think maybe having a plan, like, like I said, I, I don't necessarily, here's, here's my, here's my thing with the, um, human rights ordinance or commission. Like I, I could see an ordinance saying, you know, like reinforcing this is what we believe, you know, and kind of like reinforcing. Our statement on, our resolution. I don't necessarily know how that ordinance would interact with that, you know, like is generally ordinance is, is law and it has. You know, like clear guidelines and consequences, you know, that, that type of thing, so I'm not exactly sure. But I think the commission, unless we had like a group of people that were really gung ho and coming to our meetings and saying, we wanna be on this commission. We want this to be, you know, something that the city pursues, like I don't even know. If we're gonna be able to find people that have the time to, to give to it, and then if we, if they did, what they would do. So I, I do like the idea of training, but thoughts?
I think that there is a sizable group in the East Hampton Community Coalition. And I think that they would be very interested in being a part of it, so I just wanna.
Okay.
Make sure that you're not overstating the lack of interest, because I think there is a sizable group.
No, I, I agree. I think, I think there would be.
There are a lot of other issues, procedural issues, and a lot of. Resistance that I heard from the police chief and the mayor about em- empowering too many people in the city to be.
To complain?
Not to complain, but creating. Creating a lot of red tape or a lot of questions and suspicions when there's active investigations going on. I mean, I would have to look back to the minute to the minute, but there was a lot of resistance.
I remember.
Yeah, I agree.
To this, so.
And which, which is why, the reason why I wanted this on the, so here's, here, this was, the reason why I wanted to keep this was because. At that, at that time when that meeting was, I mean, they would have said, well, everything's fair and equal at the high school. Well, we found out it wasn't.
Right.
And it was significantly not fair and equal. So, that's why I wanted this to stay on our agenda, because.
I agree.
You know, like, I mean, are we, are we afraid that if someone investigates how we prosecute people? In the city of East Hampton for crimes, that we're gonna find similar trends? Like I, I don't, what's the fear? I don't necessarily know.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I.
I, I kind of just took it at face value, if there's an investigation for certain things that you do to get through the investigation. And that the offshoot didn't really have authority, but yet.
Well, I think.
Didn't really have a defined role, it wasn't presented as a defined role. And yet, people have, would have expectations in maybe saying things that. Or not saying things that are confidential or not confidential, as opposed to going to the typical. The regular procedural process.
Well, I guess my thought was is that.
I suppose if somebody doesn't feel comfortable with, with the, the regular process. Then people would have an alternative route of some sort, maybe not the Human Rights Commission.
Well, here's my, here's my thought.
Does the DA's office have any alternative?
They probably do. I mean, they, no, they do, I mean, because.
Alternative routes, because anyone who feels like.
They have a civil rights division. But here's, here's the thing, so, you know, like, say you were a parent, it felt like your child at East Hampton High School was being treated unfairly because they were. You know, a, a kid of color, right? And you went to the high school and they're like, no, 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 everything's fair. And then went to the, to the city and they're like, no, everything's fair. And, and if you don't have like a, another place to be able to, I mean, look what happened.
But.
If you don't have like a place.
What if you, if we look at the remedies for the high school, that person now is there.
Right.
So they do have a liaison person at the high school. So, I mean, it could be, we're creating a.
Something that.
It's terminology, Human Rights Commission, or it was.
Yeah, it was Human Rights Commission or ordinance.
That, it's divisive in the term itself, and so.
Kind of like Sanctuary City.
Right. So.
I mean, I'm, I'm, like, listen, I, I think the training is a really good idea. Um, and I, I agree that it's kind of a nebulous thing that maybe if you have, someone who has a problem like, oh, you know, I've been, I've. Been treated unfairly by the police, so I wanna come to a Human Rights Commission, cause I feel like my, my rights were violated. And then that creates like, uh, you know, in a public meeting, someone saying things that could be confidential, that creates this weird dynamic, right?
A weird dynamic, and I'm not sure we have the people who would be able to clearly handle a complaint properly. They would have to be some real training, I mean, training that goes beyond the level of, it was a real economics to case up.
But I think one, one area where.
I mean, I don't know, I, I, I'm not sure who would be competent to do that.
But I do think one area is they could look at like the idea of institutional bias. You know, at, with our ordinances, you know, or with different policies that get passed in the city. You know, are we, you know, creating an equitable, fair, um, environment within the city? So actively trying to combat, so the Human Rights Commission could actively try to combat, you know, the idea of institutional racism. Or also potentially look at, you know, what are the hiring patterns in relation to the composition of the community? Like, do we have a police force that represents the community that it's policing? Um, do we have, you know, a staff in, in the, in the, and just identifying those things? I don't, I'm just, I'm just brainstorming here, you know, so, and I don't, I don't know.
I'm, I'm thinking about how we, how we kind of started was the graffiti that appeared off of East Hampton on.
On Mount Tom.
On Mount Tom, and graffiti that to me was horrendous. Inappropriate, didn't represent our community, I, it, my perspective of our community, and I think most. Almost everyone's perspective of the community, and yet. There should be a place to go if we could work on removing both the actual physical graffiti and. Whatever the root causes. Causes people to take hatred towards one another as the approach, as opposed to some sort of civil discourse. Where we try to work with one another, although we don't agree on any issues.
Yeah, well. Well, I think.
And, and, and that's how I envision the Human Rights Commission, as, as a place that could, could serve to. To, to, to be a, a voice for several, and yet, wasn't, so it wasn't like judging anyone, but it was saying. What can we do to become a better community?
Well, and I think part of that's education, you know, it would be great if we had, I mean, I just wrote an article today, like talking about, cause I'm, I share a room with a history teacher. And he had an article on his desk and, you know, basically how we are failing to teach the kind of nasty pieces of American history that people need to know. You know, in the, in the appropriate context. And, you know, really, if you, a lot of the, a lot of the, the problems that we're facing is that we're facing people that are ignorant of the, the true realities of our history, you know?
You know, I, I, I find that interesting, because I, I was taught a different history than. I think now being taught and told by my wife all the time, who's the educator in the family. Who says, yeah, we do teach about various incidents, various perspectives where. There really was an ugly underbelly to the victor in whatever the situation is. Whoever wins. Gets to write the history books and how we view things.
Right, the history books, yeah.
And yet, I think, I think those history books are written much differently now. I mean, if you read.
Than when they're when they used to be.
How, how, Howard Zinn.
Yeah.
Uh, and, 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 and his. Accounts of history and others' accounts of history, I'm told there, it's, that it's incorporated, I, you. Incorporated into the, into the edu, the history process.
Let's hope so. I mean, if it is, that's good.
And, and I think, I think it is. It may be, and certainly worth pursuing, because if it isn't, I think there needs to be a, a much more balanced history.
Or, or, I mean, and here's the thing, I think.
And, and my guess is it is.
Yeah, but, um.
I'm, I'm damn it, I guess, I'm, I'm told very strongly that it is.
And, and, and I think, I think it's like an overall approach too, like, because I think some of those people that are, are hearing those accounts of history. Are, have already been kind, have already been co-opted in, in a way, you know, basically saying, well, the, the people that are teaching you are, have an agenda. And so they're gonna tell you this, but that's not the real thing. So come onto our internet site and read this stuff and that's what's real, you know? So it's like, the ability to process information and, and to know what's, what's real and what's not real. In, in the context of, of being in a, such a media saturated environment. And not only that, but being in such an environment where the truth is so. It's so convoluted, it becomes nebulous. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess.
So, and, and children are gonna have a really difficult time to kind of sort through that, so.
Don't we bring back the.
Well, because they could.
Why do we leave this on the agenda or not?
Yeah, I mean, one of the roles could be potentially, you know, no, they can't be, they can't. I don't know. I really don't. I, I think.
I think, would it make sense for us to be open to the human rights issue? If, if we had kind of a, a concept that was workable, I think, I think. I think we always have the ability to, to reach back.
Sure.
Into, to, to bring it up without, if we, if we, if we, without pressures dismissed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that, but. I wouldn't say anything hard, anything.
We don't, we, I'm not sure we, we don't have issues, or we, or we shouldn't pursue diversity training. I, I am very much in favor, it's just we have something in our agenda that I'm not sure we have a definition.
Or we know what to do with it necessarily, yet, but.
And I, I'm not opposed to kicking it around for another meeting or two, you know?
I would like. Let's, maybe let's kick it around for another meeting, let's invite Jen back. She's the one that brought it up. So maybe let's, like.
Kick it around?
Uh, I think, I think she's getting back soon. Um, and, but I would like to hear her take on like what she envisions it as maybe, you know, cause she is the one that brought it to us. So, you know, see what, if maybe she has like this, that she hasn't just communicated to, cause she gave us, I don't, do you guys remember? She gave us like a packet, it was like, uh, or Chicago or, so it was like big and I'm like, whoa. Not, not really transferable to East Hampton, so.
It was a much larger community with much different resources and set, a whole set of different issues.
Much different, yeah. I tried, I did, I did do a lot of research on this, and like I really tried to figure out what was, Northampton was doing and Greenfield. And I wasn't able to get a lot, and I tried to, I looked through as many articles as I could find. Um, you know, basically what they did was, you know, from what I found was they came out supporting Sanctuary City. You know, like they, they kind of come out and like make a public statement that we support this, or.
I, maybe we should ask the collaborative that's working with the schools, their professional opinion. I mean, the three of us can go around forever about whether or not this is needed, but I think agencies that work. On the regular basis with these issues might be more informed. And I, I, I think the public would be more willing to hear either acceptance or, you know, dismissal of this. On the basis of people who work in that field, rather than. The absence of Jen coming to the meetings, cause.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's see. Okay, does anybody wanna take the, the reins on reaching out to the collaborative?
I can do that.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
And then what we can do, I'm, I still think for the, so I'm trying to keep this on for a little bit longer and. And I think as far as the, the recreational marijuana thing, I think it probably makes sense for us to kind of wait and see what the planning board comes up with. Cause I know that they have, they're having working meetings and they're developing, they actually have been developing an ordinance.
Okay.
So, I think that we can go from there when we get there. Anything else?
Nope.
Wow, that's really good. Nice talking to you guys. Alright, a motion to dismiss?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Ah.
Alright, six forty-five.
We do.
Nice job.
There we go. Dinner time.